Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of Watertown, South Dakota, Monday, March 19, 2018. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Albertson, absent. Bueller? Bueller. Danforth?
Here.
Lallum?
Here.
Manti? Absent. Roby?
Here.
Solom?
Here.
Thorson?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Y?
Present.
Thank you. Very good. The first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion in second?
So moved.
Moved by Y, second by Lallum. Discussion?
Just a procedural question. I know there's a number of items that were at the, on the Public Works Committee agenda. There's also a number of items further on, on our agenda that aren't on the consent agenda. What's the distinction there?
Okay, Glenn. We're getting there. You're, you're on to something. We will be putting items like that on the consent agenda in the future. And we're kind of take, this is a new thing for us, to put these sort of things on a consent agenda. But we're kind of seeing how it would go with the bids and that sort of stuff. And then some of these other things in the future will be consent agenda items. So, good catch. Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. The second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. And I would like to remove item number 16, which is a resolution expressing intent to enter into a lease agreement. And we already have a lease agreement here that goes for another year. It's still a valid lease. So there's no reason to do this lease agreement now. So I'll just pull that off the agenda. Any other proposed changes? Is there a motion in second for approval? Moved by Vilhauer, second by Bueller. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay. This next item is recognition of awards to City of Watertown employees. And I, I would just like to say that the City of Watertown has some really outstanding public servants. And I think they deserve recognition. So in case people didn't see the newspaper clipping about this, I would like to introduce them to the council and make sure that everyone knows how awesome these people are. These are, with the exception of the Employee of the Year, which is something we've done for a couple of years, these were new awards this year. And I may change it up every year, but these were things that I picked because I think they're important. The Caregiver Award is for someone who consistently looks out for the needs of others. And when I say your names, please come to the forward. It's Nick Amon from the Police Department. And Nick is very deserving of this award. And you can just stay up here, Nick, and I'm going to bring everybody up. The next award is the Mentor Award, given to someone who helps other employees to learn their jobs and to get along and be good employees. But this person also mentors customers of the City of Watertown, which is pretty awesome. So Becky Sprouse from the library is the Mentor Award recipient. For the Creativity Award, for thinking outside of the box, I gave that award to an entire department because everything they do is, involves thinking outside the box. And that's the IT department. It's Ray Tesh, Pete Boyle, and Spencer Tenick. And are things going to run when you guys are away from there? I guess we'll find out. The Rookie of the Year is someone who's been employed by the city for three years or less and is already showing rock star potential. And that happens to be Spencer Tenick from the IT department. And then finally, but not leastly, the Employee of the Year is someone everyone can look up to because this person just is what being a public servant is all about. And he's, I have so much respect for this person. I happily gave this award to Lee McPeak, our police chief. So let's give all of these people a great big hand. Get some pictures. You guys are all awesome. Item number four is presentation of a plaque to David Straight for years of service on the Municipal Utilities Board. And can I have the handheld microphone? Dave, if you want to join me up front. Dave has served over 20 years on the Municipal Utilities Board. And that's a lot of volunteering for a very important board for the City of Watertown. And it's not an easy board to sit on. And I know they greatly appreciated all of your input over those years. And he isn't leaving the Municipal Utilities Board. He's actually now becoming their legal counsel. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, application for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage license to Travis Mosley and Amy Kirkhevel doing business as Roadhouse 81 Bar and Grill at 621 Fifth Avenue Southeast, which I think was formerly known as The Drake. And so first of all, I'd like to open the public hearing and see if anyone is here to talk about this. Please come forward and state your name in the microphone.
Hi, Travis Mosley.
And what would you like to say about it?
Um, so, you know, we're looking to open a supper club with, with malt beverage. Probably expand that to wine as approved here. But we got a neat little idea for a supper club, having some good affordable steaks and along with a, a drink, obviously. But looking for you guys' approval on that and looking to open next week, weekend.
Wow, very good.
So, so yeah, it's nice to get that place opened up again.
Yes.
And there's, a lot of the work was done. Very nice building. We're putting a nice facelift on it, too, and it should be, should be fun.
Excellent. Thank you.
You bet.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak about this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion in second for approval. Moved by Bueller, second by Lallum. Any discussion? Councilman Roby?
For the record, I'm recusing myself from items five and six.
Okay. Councilman Vilhauer?
I'm not sure this makes any difference, but I'll ask a question anyway. I, I know this had to go before the Board of Adjustment because there was, I'm not quite sure what the reason was. I mean, there was, I think because of the-
I think that's, at least the time closed, right, and had to go back in front.
My question, though, is at, at that meeting, the pro, the applicant was actually Raw Properties LLC, and now it's coming before us with a little bit different, different name or-
Yep. And so maybe it could come up here, but Amy and Wendy Hansen are Raw Properties.
Yeah. So I own the entire building with Wendy. And then we are doing just the bar entity. So we have a lease agreement with Raw Properties.
You're Amy.
I'm Amy.
Okay. Amy Kirkhevel, did I say that?
Kirkhevel, that's correct, yeah. Thanks.
Okay. Other questions? Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is application for a temporary location transfer and return of retail on-sale liquor license owned by Prairie Winds Golf Club, doing business as Prairie Winds Golf Club. A for the period of 5:00 PM, April 6, 2018, to 2:00 AM, April 7, 2018, from 555 South Lake Drive to 1910 West Kemp. And I believe this is for the Boys and Girls Club Camel Race Derby. And so I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and I see that Lisa Karikos is here to talk about-
I am. On behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, it's that time of year, this is our fourth annual event of the camel races, held at the Connington County Extension Building. And Prairie Winds was generous enough to donate their liquor license for the evening. And we hope that council will come. We have over 36 local sponsors for the event, so it should be a good showing. And it seems like once somebody goes, they get hooked. So, and we hope you all come.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak about this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Look for a motion in second for approval by the council. Moved by Lallum, second by Bueller. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then B for the period after 2:00 AM, April 7, 2018, from 1910 West Kemp to 555 South Lake Drive. I'll open the public hearing for this action, see if anyone wants to talk about it. Don't see anybody, so I'll close the public hearing and look for a motion in second from the council for approval. Moved by Lallum, second by Danforth. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number seven is request by the Chamber of Commerce for the City Council to permit the consumption of alcohol at the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center on March 22, 2018, for a Chamber After Four event. And the City Council can allow consumption for a period of 24 hours by action. So look for a motion in second.
So moved.
Moved by Vilhauer, second by Y. Discussion?
Mayor, what is the, the timeframe for that? Is it, it's only a couple hours, I think, isn't it, or something?
Yes.
Four to six.
Is it six or seven? It's six? Four to 6:00 PM.
Okay. And what is the plan for, will the facility be shut down to general use at that point?
The facility will remain open.
It will remain open.
Yep.
Where's this going to be located?
This is at the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center.
Yeah, where, which portion?
In the party room would be the actual Chamber After Four event.
And so that would be, would those drinks be contained to that area or try to be contained to that area, then?
That, that is the plan.
Okay.
And just to clarify, there, there's no sales of any alcohol. I mean, it just, it's, we're, we're providing the, the city's, funding the, the beer and wine for the event. There's no sales as such for the product?
City of Watertown is a Chamber member, and we have a beautiful new Prairie Lakes Wellness Center. This is our chance to show it off to the community and hope everybody comes. And it's just a little part of those Chamber After Four things that we're doing like the rest of them. So, any other comments?
In one year, tomorrow is our grand opening.
Yeah.
It's our first day. So, a year already, so.
Yeah. Pretty awesome. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number eight is authorization for the mayor to sign a terminal lease agreement with Air Inc., or A-R-I-N-C Inc., for the Watertown Regional Airport. And our airport manager was unable to come to the meeting, so I'll just take it. It's a very small amount of space that is going to be leased 15 square feet for the purpose of putting up a communication tower. And this has passed all the FAA requirements that are in, in the works. So everything's in line except for your approval. So I'll look for a motion in second to authorize me to sign the agreement. Moved by Bueller, second by Lallum. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number nine is approval of resolution number 18-05, contingency transfers. I'll look for a motion in second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Roby, second by Vilhauer. And this was discussed in the Finance Committee meeting at length. Kristin, do you want to just do a quick summary?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. This is a contingency transfer. What this will do is it'll give the budget authority to the two departments that are listed, the engineering and the parks for the golf course department. What this does is it gives budget authority, but not actual money. So the engineering will come out of the unreserved fund balance in the general fund. And the Parks Board approved the use of $42,000 in restricted cash out of the park and rec fund. And the remaining 30 will be out of their unreserved fund balance. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 10 is authorization for the Parks and Recs Department to enter into an agreement with Johnson Controls through Nation Power, Nation Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA, for the Fieldhouse Boiler Project. And this also went through the Finance Committee and received recommendation from the Finance Committee earlier. Is there a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Y, second by Lallum. Any discussion, comments, or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 11 is authorization for the Parks and Rec Department to enter into an agreement with Toro through National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA, for a park system mower and a golf course mower. This also was discussed at the Finance Committee at length and received the recommendation of the Finance Committee. So look for a motion in second for approval. Moved by Solom, second by Thorson. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 12 is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement for Engineering Services Amendment in the amount of $54,900 with Houston Engineering, Inc., for a project solicitation and construction administration for the Watertown Regional Landfill 2018 Stormwater Improvements, project number 1818. And this was discussed at the Public Works Committee and received their recommendation. Is there a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Lallum, second by Danforth. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 13 is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement for Engineering Services in the amount of $29,500 with Clark Engineering for project design plans and specifications for the Third Avenue Northeast Culvert Replacement Project, number 1811. This also went to Public Works Committee and received their recommendation. Is there a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Bueller, second by Y. Any discussion or questions? Councilman Lallum?
Mayor, I'd just like to point out that this is for them to design box culvert or-
Yes.
Or pipes or new, new system, so-
Yes.
If people are, didn't watch the first one.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep. There are existing culverts and we're replacing them. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 14 is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with H.R. Green Engineering for Construction Engineering Services related to the Highway 81 and 20th Avenue South Sewer Relocation Project, number 1805, increasing the amount $13,600 for a total of $33,400. And this went to the Public Works Committee and received their recommendation. This is a sewer that's being relocated to be out of the way for the roundabout, which is being constructed this summer. So I would look for a motion in second for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Roby.
Second.
Second by Y. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 15 is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with WSP USA for hydrological and geological environmental services for the Watertown Landfill. This also went to the Public Works Committee and received their recommendation. This is something we do periodically. I believe it's three-year, three-year contract. And same company, different name. And so they'll be doing some testing and so on. Look for a motion in second for approval. Moved by Solom, second by Danforth. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 17 is approval of resolution number 18-10 for the Bridge Reinspection Program for Use with the South Dakota DOT Retainer Contracts. This also received the recommendation of the Public Works Committee. And the engineer that is being recommended to the state is Infrastructure Design Group. The contract will be between the South Dakota DOT and Infrastructure Design Group. They allow the local community, the City of Watertown, to choose the consultant. And Infrastructure Design Group has done this for the city in the past successfully on different bridges. And they haven't done these bridges yet, but this will be a new, new group of bridges for them. Is there a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Vilhauer, second by Thorson. Any discussion or questions?
Mayor, I do have a question. Is this the other half? Is that what this is?
Yes.
And then every, every year we're doing half?
Yes. Correct. The, the bridges are broken in, to two groups and their inspection cycle is every other year. So every other year they get inspected. Some of the things like box culverts are on a four-year cycle, but regular bridges are every other year.
Okay.
Good question. Any others? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 18 is approval of resolution number 18-07, the plat of lots 28A and 28B of Block 2 in Hidden Valley Edition. And I'll look for a motion in second, but we are going to talk about this one. Is there a motion? Moved by Danforth, second by Bueller. Okay, Shane, you want to tell us about this?
Thank you, Mayor. Lots 28A and 28B are of Hidden Valley Edition, is located at the far end of Pompeeska Drive, out by Lake Pompeeska. If you can put my screen on the board there. It is, this was a single lot here at the north end of Pompeeska. And the proposal is to split it into two residential lots. The current zoning is R3. And they're not chan, planning to change the zoning at all. The R3 multi-family district is contiguous to the south. It's A1 agricultural to the east, R1 single-family residential, east, north, and west, just outside of this picture here, as you can see. This plat will create two conforming lots from one existing lot. One of the items that was of note from the Plan Commission was that a turnaround be established for public use. And that is being designated on an, as an easement on the adjacent property. There will be subsequent action, action requested of this council to approve that turnaround. It does increase the, extend the roadway by approximately 30 feet. And that will be improved with asphalt in light condition of the existing Pompeeska street section. We did ask for a waiver of right to protest as part of the pending development agreement here, too, also with this project, so that if in the future curb and gutter and sidewalk and other amenities are proposed as improvements, that they would have a waiver of right to protest those improvements. So with that, I'll leave it to any questions.
Yes. Councilman Roby?
You said they're going to split to two R3 lots?
The zoning is R3. And they both have, the smaller lot contains about 16, or 15,900 square feet, and the other lot is 25,618.
So they're going to be R3? Do they indicate where they can put up apartment complexes or what are they putting up?
Single-family residence is what we're hearing.
They could legally put apartments on those. They could.
Why R3? What's the, if they're going to put-
Condos.
That was the pre-existing zoning.
You're just going to leave it R3?
Correct.
Just not change it? Okay. But they're probably going to put houses up?
That's what we understand.
Okay.
Yes. Councilman Lallum?
Who's, who, what's the, who's the expense going to on the addition, additional for Pompeeska? That the developer are going to be putting that in?
Yes. They will extend the roadway. And utilities are already extended out there to serve those lots, so there's no utility improvements other than the water and sewer services that would be necessary for those properties at this time.
The sewer up to 28, what would be 28A now?
Yes. It's, it's in this easement right here.
Okay.
That's located on this plat.
So and then there's still R3, which is one to four unit houses?
Correct.
Okay.
R3 is our most dense residential.
Yeah.
They can put apartment buildings with more than four units in there, as long as they meet the area. Yep. Councilman Roby?
Hidden Valley has an association. This is not any part of the association, is it?
I believe it still is.
It's part of the association? Did they, did they weigh in on this? Or is there covenants we have to be aware of?
They, we did have a public hearing at this, at the Plan Commission last summer, and they were informed of that meeting. And the only comment we had was there was no public turnaround, and that's what we addressed through this easement.
Councilman Vilhauer?
I just want to clarify, this one, as well as the next two agenda items, that, it butts up or is very close to Stony Point area out there, but this is not Stony Point's vicinity. If there's any confusion out there, if people look at the map, we're, we're talking about property adjacent to or close to it, but it's not the Stony Point area. Fair statement.
Yes.
True. And thanks for pointing out that these three agenda items are all related. The plat, since it has required improvements, also has a development agreement. And since this road is not up to standard for our current city standards, there's waivers of right to- to protest included in the development agreement that the owner would sign, promising not to challenge if the city would ask the road to be brought up to current standards at some point in the future. And then the turnaround is on somebody else's property, so there's an item for that too, but they're all about this development. And this was, yes, sidewalks are in the waiver of right to protest. This is, requires the council approval, so each item separately, we'll take them, but... I did get a motion in second, didn't I, on this, for the plat? Okay, are there any other questions about the plat? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Okay, item 19 is the approval of Resolution Number 18-09 with Dennis Arnold, Acting Agent of Arnold Construction, Inc., for a perpetual turnaround easement granted to the City of Watertown. So, this is the same plat, but that turnaround easement was on separate property, so it's being handled separately. And did this receive the recommendation of the Plan Commission?
This was a result of a recommendation from the Plan Commission.
Okay, right, okay. So is there a motion in second for approval? Moved by Roby, second by Thorson. Any questions or comments? Shane already explained what it was. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 20 is authorization for the Mayor to sign a development agreement with Dr. Robert Arnold for a plat of lots 28A and 28B in Block Two of Hidden Valley Edition. This is where the developer promises to pave the road to that little extra length and include the turnaround, plus all of the waivers of right to protest, bringing the road up to full standard if the city wanted to do that in the future. Is there a motion in second for approval? Moved by Lalum. Second by Vilhauer. Any other comments? Shane, did you want to say something?
Yeah, the only clarification I want to make with the turnaround is that the city will take over the maintenance once it's built, so we're going to treat it as if it's part of the street system even though it's on an easement on private property. So, we will take over maintenance of the turnaround once it's constructed.
And this is not a temporary turnaround, this is seen as a permanent one, people won't be able to park on it. Yes, Brad?
Is, does that going to have curbing around it, or like a drive-over curb or anything like that?
Not, not on the original design, we're just going to treat it similar to Pompeeska Drive, doesn't have curb and gutter along either side of it right now.
Councilman Roby?
It looks like that's not a turnaround, that's a back-in, turn and back-out.
Yeah, it's a, we used a detail from the, from the fire code, they have a certain criteria that they need to utilize that, so we used, it's a, called an 120-foot hammerhead configuration, and that, again, it's intended to be able to turn fire trucks and garbage trucks and that kind of equipment around on there.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carried. Item number 21 is authorization for the Mayor to sign the settlement agreement and mutual release related to K&amp;L Mechanical, Inc., versus the City of Watertown by and through its Municipal Utilities Department. And their, Councilman Danforth did notice the extra zero in the...
That's a lot, isn't it?
Yeah, we'll be taking that out on the actual agreement. The dollar amount is $67,500 that K&amp;L pays, and then, yeah, that's an extra zero in there. And then the city and utilities pay $6,000 back to K&amp;L. And so I'm going to ask for a motion in second for approval of this, and then we'll have some discussion. Moved by Danforth, second by Bueller. Okay, Lisa Carrico represented the city on this, so she's here to explain this a little better.
Yes, for memory's sake, this particular lawsuit arose out of some construction on 19th Street with some lane of pipe. Basically, K&amp;L had sued the city for wrongful termination, and then the city counterclaimed with a, excuse me, a negligence suit and a breach in the warranty of workmanship when a leak was discovered in the pipe that was laid. The parties went to mediation, and this is the end result. I believe the agreement kind of speaks for itself as to what they're agreeing to. The Municipal Utilities Board has already approved this amount. It's well within the parameters that the board had set, so Utilities is on board and has already signed the agreement. I guess depending on any questions, if it's something that was discussed in mediation, I would defer to any executive session, but if you have a general question, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Councilman Lalum?
Is this for when they had to go back and cut up the new road and spot, spot place?
Yes, and I can tell, yes, and I can tell you that the $67,500 does basically bring Utilities whole as far as what they had to expend to locate and fix the leak.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Vilhauer?
Just a comment, I've been the liaison on the Utilities Board from this organ, from this group for almost, but going on three years now, and it's so nice to see this finally get resolved, because almost every meeting, this was an item of discussion, and nice to see it finally get resolved.
I agree. Everybody agrees. Other questions or comments? See, none? I'll ask for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carried. Thanks, Lisa. Item number 22 is the first reading of Ordinance Number 18-01, amending district boundaries by rezoning Block Five of Valley View First Edition from R1 Single Family Residential District and R3 Multi-Family Residential District to R2 Single Family. There's no action required here, but if anyone has any questions about this, Shane can answer them. Any questions? Councilman Vilhauer?
This came before us, once before, a number of months ago. What's, what's the deal as far as it coming back again?
Okay, so when Valley View first come to the city, first steps were to annex and zone, and then subsequently they came forward with their preliminary plan, and both the Plan Commission and the City Council had some recommendations with regard to the zoning. And so, one of that recommendation was this Block Five, Lot Five was zoned R3 at the time, but the recommendation was to downzone that to a R2. And now we're coming forward to rezone that as R2, but also the adjoining four lots, if, can you put my screen up? Everything bound in this dashed line is what's being rezoned in this action. So, this was Block Five, Lot, or Block Five, Lot Five was zoned R3, so that's going to get rezoned to R2. But in addition to that, they want to rezone these four R1 lots to R2 as well. And what they want to do is make it available for two-family residential dwellings, and they're going to replat this entire Block Five. And the, so we did run this by the, or through the Plan Commission as per ordinance, and they recommended, I mean, we're following what the recommendation of the preliminary plan comments were, so we're getting caught back up to make this an R2 zoning, and I understand that it's going to be twin, replatted with the thought of twin homes being in there.
Councilman Lalum?
Shane, are they going to be changing the lot sizes on that then?
Correct.
Making them deeper as well?
Well, as an example, the lots one through four on the side, I understand that that's going to be converted to three lots instead of four, but then the Block Five piece will be split into six, so, so they're going to reconfigure the whole, whole block.
And then up to the north of that, they had Fifth Street there, are they going to put a road through there then, or no?
Fifth Street will be a road going to the north.
Yeah, but to the south, it's, it's not going to?
Not a public road, is what, we're hearing a private drive.
Any other questions or comments? All right, no action required on that. On the request for council action memo, there's a piece in there about manufactured mobile home provisions, is that meant to be there?
That's in, that's in there as a reference, as type-one manufactured homes would be allowed in the R2 zoning.
Oh, I see, I see.
It's not, it's not anything more than noting that that's allowable use.
Okay, I see. All right, item number 23 is the first reading of Ordinance Number 18-02, amending Chapter 21.1003, one of the revised ordinances of the City of Watertown regarding maximum mean heights of non-residential structures in the I1, I2, and BP zoning districts. Again, it's, no action required here, it's just a first reading, but if anyone has any questions, I'm sure Shane can answer them. Councilman Lalum?
Reason for the height change?
We recently revisited the height restrictions on the C1, 2, and 3 districts, and then further discussion and review was that, that height restriction would probably be appropriate in the I1, I2, and BP districts, as well as those C districts.
So just cleaning up?
Yep. Extending that courtesy to all of those zones.
Any other questions or comments? Right. Item number 24 is old business, is there any old business? Councilman Vilhauer?
Where you going to address that?
On new business.
Oh, okay.
Item number 25 is new business. I do have a little piece of new business. The city has received the airline bids, there were three bids given, and the Airport Board met today to consider those, and they're not ready to present to the council yet, but I just wanted to put that out there, that, at the next, probably at the next City Council meeting, the City Council will be asked to make a recommendation, move forward with Yes, another item of old business is the Veterans Cemetery. There was an article in the paper recently, talking about the Veterans Cemetery, and I received a call from Larry Zimmerman, the Secretary of the South Dakota Department of Veteran Affairs recently, and he had some concerns about the article published in the public opinion entitled "Fundraising Begins for Veterans Cemetery in Watertown." And his concerns were that, first of all, the project name, Veterans Cemetery of South Dakota, VCSD, is misleading, as it is not a state cemetery. There cannot be a state-sanctioned veterans cemetery in Watertown. South Dakota cannot be used in the title of a community-based veterans cemetery. None of the tribal cemeteries utilize South Dakota in their name. Secondly, the statement that the proposed Sioux Falls Cemetery would require a veteran to have two years of active duty and an honorable discharge is misleading. Eligibility for burial at a state cemetery will be in conjunction with all federal laws, rules, and regulations. And thirdly, the statement that, quote, "The VCSD Board will receive $1,049 from the Veterans Administration for each burial at the Watertown Cemetery. The VA pays $749 for burial costs and $300 for a plot allowance of each qualifying burial, regardless of where the grave is located," is false. The VA only reimburses these funds to recognize state and tribal cemeteries. And so, it's understandable where the confusion may have arisen from, but I think it's probably appropriate for me to comment on this as well. Recently, the State Veterans Association, or the, I'm saying that wrong, the South Dakota Department of Veteran Affairs did make a decision choosing a location for a state veterans cemetery. And before they did that, the city had several times written letters in support of having that state veterans cemetery in Watertown. The City Council did authorize the mayor, Mayor Thorson wrote a letter, and I wrote a letter, in support of that, and saying that, that if that facility were authorized as a state cemetery, that the city would be granting land for that purpose. And since it's not possible now to have a state-sanctioned veterans cemetery in Watertown, that needs to be revisited, and it was implied that the city was giving the land to this purpose, which isn't necessarily true, that's misleading as well. That's not what the council said when they took action on this item. So, nothing against veterans, of course, the city supports the veterans, and we supported the idea of a state veterans cemetery in Watertown, and that's just not going to happen. So, we need to take a step back before we launch forward. We haven't given the land yet, and I don't think it's fair to say that the council will give that land until they're asked that question for a cemetery that isn't state sanctioned. So, we'll probably have that on an upcoming agenda if they want to pursue that, but anybody else want to comment on that? Are there any liaison member reports? Councilman Vilhauer?
Just a quick report, at our last, I guess two meetings going on, we discussed the one-year banking agreement with the Great Western Bank contingent upon Utilities Board, or Utilities and the bank buying in. They have, and also the Utilities has agreed to pay one-half of the cost of the agreement. So that's a brief update from an item that came before us a couple of meetings.
Thank you. Any others? All right, next item on the agenda is executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, and we will have a need to go into executive session this evening in order to discuss and consult with legal counsel on some negotiations that we're doing, and so I would look for a motion in second to go into executive session. Moved by Lalum, second by Vilhauer. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. No action will be taken when we come out. Thank you.